Good afternoon, everyone. I called the order of this committee of the whole meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council and would ask the city secretary to call the role, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Bessie. Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Protem Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Thank you very much. As you know, this is a kind of a working session for the city councils. We've come together in a committee-like setting. We're going to deal with three primary issues today. I hope to be able to move those forward. So no instance of time, we're going to go ahead and get started. I'll call on the city manager for item number one, please, which is the review of the 2014 and 2018 bond projects.
Thank you, Mayor Joins, members of the city council, Mayor Protem Burke. Today, as the mayor said, we're going to cover three items. The first is an update on all of the bond projects that are already underway or completed. I then look at some emerging capital needs. Staff has a recommendation there for approval of some additional projects. And then last but certainly not least, the budget forecast for next year. I'd ask Mr. Rowell to begin the discussion along with the bonds.
Mr. Rowell?
Good afternoon, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem Burke, and members of the city council.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So first of all, I wanted to start out by just providing an update on the 2014 bond projects. The slide here before you is kind of a dashboard, kind of summarizes where we are at this point. We've got 351 total authorized projects, and that includes every street resurfacing segment that has been addressed through the bonds. Of that 351, about 77% are completed, with 82 remaining that are either in design or under construction. Probably the most significant projects still outstanding are the renovation of the Public Safety Center, which we're right now projected to complete in August of 2020, improvements to Happy Hill Park, and we're projected to complete that project by the end of this calendar year, the Metal Art Drive widening project, and then various sidewalk projects. So $103 million has been either spent or committed to date, but the $149.6 million appropriated for these projects. And the reason why that's a little bit higher than the $139.2 million that voters approved in 2014 is because we were able to issue two issuances of the bonds at a premium, so we were able to enjoy some additional capacity. We've also been tracking our NWB participation to make sure that we are providing opportunities for minority and women business enterprises to participate in these projects. And for the projects that have been formally bid, we've had 24% participation by NWBs or $12 million, and then 64% of the value of our projects that have been informally bid were $2 million. And the chart there shows by bond order how we are progressing in terms of what's of the projects authorized, how many are in progress, and how many are completed. So that's just a brief overview of where we are with the 2014 bonds. As far as the 2018 bond projects, voters approved $122 million last November. We just wanted to provide the overview of the projects that we are committed to building through these five bond orders: economic development, housing, public safety facilities, streets and sidewalks, parks and recreation. Those five bond orders. I will note that of the items in the parks and recreation, about $14 million of those projects addressed some of the findings that were identified through the Parks and Recreation Deferred Maintenance Study. We provided that, or at least a summary of that assessment to you all last Thursday, but we can provide a little more substantive executive summary if you wish. But the $14 million of these 2018 bonds will go towards addressing some of those findings. The total from that study was about $44 million in identified need. So those were the items there. I'll be happy to answer any questions on these two updates before moving on to the next category.
You mentioned there were three principal projects left on the 2014, which was the plug safety building update project at Happy Hills and Metal Art. We're going to talk about Metal Art today. The other two, how will they come into hand? What we have learned as we have progressed through this is things have gotten more expensive because the construction industry has gotten busier, not being quite the deal we used to. Do we have any feel yet on how those other two are going to come into view? Be wary of any full horizon?
Yes, sir. With regard to Happy Hill Park, we will be bringing a change order to the mayor and council in May to add to the scope of that project, the track. So we have funding that we are going to reallocate from the Winston Lake Park project. So these are all within the East Ward to provide that track, so to, I think, better meet the community expectations for the Happy Hill Park. We've not gotten any indication that the spending for that project is trending such that we would need to make any further adjustments. With regard to the Public Safety Center, we've already had presented, you know, an amendment to address the sprinkler system replacement or actually upgrade that we need to provide for that building, but as of right now, there are no additional needs that have been identified or reasons to adjust it. So right now, we're thinking August of 2020 for the Public Safety Center and the end of this calendar year for Happy Hill.
So you'd think if we could get Metal Art take care of it, everything from 2014 is funded, okay, no more concern?
I think our feeling is with the additional monies that we'll discuss, you know, here today, that that should get us.
Thank you.
Is that 2014 for the Russell's Community Center? Where is it?
That's a part of the 2018 bonds, Mayor Protem Burke. Yes, ma'am. It's a little over $1.1 million for the Carl Russell Center improvements.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Rowell? Thank you, Mr. Rowell.
Okay.
Been busy, and congratulations to our engineering department. Press Wood, excuse me. All right, so we've got some other capital needs we want to talk about at this point.
And I failed to share with you all, going back to the 2000, to the bonds real quick, we have provided as an attachment to the agenda today, we're affectionately calling the Capital Projects Playbook. That both includes projects outstanding from the 2014 bonds that we want to keep, continue to track, as well as the 2018 bonds. And so that includes a lot of information about scope, project timelines, budget, that type of thing.
We're not going to do the 96 pages one by one today.
If you would like.
If you like.
No, sir.
Mr. Taylor liked that playbook.
That's quite a book.
Yes, I do. Okay. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, emerging capital needs. So in January, staff presented a very preliminary package of potential uses of the $20 million in additional debt capacity that the city had to issue limited obligation bonds to meet some other capital needs. So those projects are included on the slide. I'm not going to necessarily touch on those, but since that January briefing, there have been additional needs that have been identified. And what we are presenting today is essentially the proposed capital plan for next fiscal year for 1920. So it's not just the limited obligation bonds, but it's also how we're proposing to use our two-thirds bonds. We issue those bonds every other year and even years, so the upcoming fiscal year, 1920, would be one of those years we would issue two-thirds bonds, plus the use of the 2018 bonds, and then some capital reserves. So looking at this list right here before you, just wanted to highlight a few of the ones that have changed or additions to this list. Bellevue Recreation Center improvements project, it's now a $3 million project. A million and a half of that would come from the limited obligation bonds, and a million and a half from the economic development bonds designated for the Southeast Ward. That's because the vision for this project is to provide space for the youth build and SOAR job training programs. We've also now identified Long Creek Park development as an emerging need there, and the scope of that project would include making renovations to the bathhouse, to the parking lots, demolishing the clubhouse, some trails, and constructing a small shelter there in the park. Pedestrian safety projects, staff has briefed the Public Works Committee over the last few months, provided some data on pedestrian incidents, and based on that data, there's money proposed to address the next round of pedestrian safety needs that will be beyond what our bond money is going to address. Then as you look to the right column there, East Ward Resurfacing, providing some additional funding there, a half a million dollars for East Ward Resurfacing as part of the 2018 bonds. The $1.7 million that was originally allocated for East Ward, because $1.7 million was allocated across all the wards, was designated for housing development. So in light of the wear and tear that we've seen on our streets, there's some money being proposed to provide some resurfacing for the East Ward. Metal Art Drive widening, funding there to basically provide, to cover the projected shortfall in the funding so we can move this project forward on through design and into actually bidding it out. Replacement of the Novak Street Bridge. That bridge has experienced a good deal of flooding to the point where now it's closed, it cannot be crossed. And so what we're proposing with this project is to use local money, $2 million of our local money, two-thirds bonds, to be able to move forward with this project. Even though we could get some just state and federal funds, the process would be more drawn out if we did that, so we wanted to try to kind of go it along and just use our money. That way, we could, we think we could finish this project by 2021. Then Recreation and Maintenance Projects, this is in response to the Deferred Maintenance Study, to provide some funding to address some of the needs identified in that study. So this is over and beyond the $14 million that is already included in the 2018 bonds. And then finally, taking care of City Hall and the Bryce Stor municipal building roofs. We've had some water intrusion, and we need to replace those roofs. They are, I think, probably at least 15 years old, and we have needs that need to be addressed there. So the next slide really just kind of summarizes the projects and the funding sources for these various projects. I'm not going to necessarily go over that again, but $23.25 million in lobs. That includes an additional $2.5 million for the city-county parking deck that we're able to do, because we're going to take the revenues, both the property tax increment and the parking revenues from the Fourth and Church Deck that's supporting the Bailey Power Pen project and giving us that additional capacity to at least cover half the cost of the city's contribution towards the city-county parking deck, the courthouse, new courthouse parking deck. And then I think we feel like we have about $750,000 in additional capacity. And then with the column there with two-thirds bonds, we've got about a little over $6.8 million in capacity, and we're proposing to use those funds to address those three major projects there: the Metal Art Drive project, Novak Street Bridge replacement, and to continue to address our recreation maintenance needs. And the million and a half there from the 2018 economic development bonds for the Southeast Ward, for the Bellevue Rec Center improvement project, and then a million and a half dollars from Union Station reserves. We have about $4.7 million in reserves for that project. We feel that we can direct a half a million for resurfacing and a million for the roof replacements and still have funding remaining to complete that project and really deliver on the vision that we have for that. So altogether, a little over $33 million in additional funding to meet these emerging capital needs. There's a resource document included that provides more of a, more information about each of these projects. If the council decides to move forward with funding for these projects, we will immediately add these to the playbook so that we can begin to track progress on those, on those projects. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Rowell on any of these projects? Just some odds and ends here. On the public safety projects, we got a report the other day on pedestrian incidents and fatalities. I'd appreciate just a quick number of how many of the pedestrian fatalities were at intersections versus mid-road crossings. I couldn't tell from the maps, just, and you don't need to get that just anytime. Doesn't need to be by tonight. Secondly, I'm not familiar with the Novak Street Bridge. If we just, I just like a map of where it is, and again, you can get that anytime.
It's in the playbook. If you looked on the.
Oh, it is? Okay. All right. Okay. Okay, fine. I'll find it in here somewhere. Liberty Plaza Colladium, that is a large project that the county's doing, and my question is, do we have any safeguards in here if the money is not raised for that? Because I think it's a $30, $40 million project. I just want to be sure that our check isn't cashed till everybody else's is there.
Yeah, I think it's all tied to the county's ties, them raising at least $8 million for the upgrades there. Of course.
I'm underbored. The capital campaign is very well along. I don't think, I don't think the timing of the, of what we need to do on the, on the park can't be worked into, you know, them hitting their goal for capital funds standpoint.
Okay, and I have no idea where they stand on it.
Although, even if they don't, that's the ugliest piece of real estate that the city of Winston-Salem owns, and something needs to be done whether or not.
I don't question that. I'm concerned we don't have control of the project, of the entire project, so we're.
Right, but it's kind of, it's being designed so it could work standalone and with the colladium center, so.
And the last question is, I thought Union Station was about done. What's left? We've got $4 million in the bank. What's left?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. So Union Station in general has been renovated to the standard set forth by the Historical Resources. So the remaining funding is we have movement of the DOT to the building that has to be funded, and also some outfit of those spaces to accommodate all of those folks. There are the outfit charges for potential tenants that are coming in there, similar to the Elizabeth Pizza. We do have the grand opening to fund, which would be minor in comparison to the others. And anything else that needs to be done to that facility, those funds need to be used for Union Station or directly related to Union Station.
But do we, does the $4 million cover all that?
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Okay, Councilor, do you have some questions?
After I finish, Strang. Just wanted to know, the money that the city is going to provide for colladium, the $2 million, is it part of the capital campaign for the organization itself, or is it separate? Does it count towards those?
Our funds and their funds stay completely separate, so they, they need to raise their own $8 million in the capital campaign, and they add to the $30 million at the county.
Thank you.
And the last time when that subject came up, I did ask about how many of the city residents are really using it, and I didn't get what I thought more of a exact number. And then also give me the number of how many county and how many of these activities are planned for youth, age group, and then how many actually minorities from some of your lower-income areas are attending. At one time when they had sidewalks, we made sure that, they would try to make sure that East of Winston-Salem would also have some opportunity.
I was fairly sure that the executive director passed that along to the city, but I know she's got that at hand, and they're good numbers. I think you'll, I think you'll be happy with them.
Yes, she stood up there and talked, but I'm, I still want for the minutes for us to make sure that this is emphasized, so it cannot be overlooked.
We can provide that information, Mayor Protem Burke, excuse me. They did note in general terms that they have about 200,000 visitors annually. About a third of those come from what they call low-income zip codes in Forsyth County, but I can provide more specific information.
Councilmember Bessie?
Just to comment on pedestrian safety projects item, I just want to be sure we're in the record, this is to be targeted toward locations, and especially intersection, that have demonstrated public safety risk needs, not just add another $2 million, let's put some sidewalks out there. The presentation in, in Public Works Committee from the data that was very carefully analyzed by staff showed that there's a much stronger correlation between severe pedestrian vehicle accidents and the, the absence of pedestrian signaledized crossing near a busy intersection. So that's just, I mean, the, the project description wasn't clear enough to suit me that that was the target of these funds. I just wanted that in the record.
Very good.
Also, then I call for the city manager's attention about the schools where students are walking. Did you get?
Yes, we, staff's going to send a letter out to the schools and ask them for information, any, any information as we've done in the past about where there are school safety issues, pedestrian child issues around the schools.
Thank you, Mr. Rowell. Councilmembers, I want to thank you and the staff for the hard work and pulling together what I think is a very comprehensive plan for capital improvements for next year. And in talking with, with most of you, I think the feeling is we'd probably like to go ahead and move forward with this package as, as soon as possible. And so if council's ready, I'd entertain a motion to approve the.
So moved.
Mayor, you're so moved. He got, don't need a bunch of seconds and thirds.
Well, I say, well, Councilmember Taylor made the motion, Secretary, Councilmember Adams, and any, any discussion on the package there.
Councilmember Taylor? Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. One thing that's been consistent over the last couple of meetings, and that's the, the presence of the friends and the supporters of the Bellevue community who have lobbied hard for this $3 million project in our community. I'm happy to say that I believe we've got a great package. This facility will change lives, it will increase property values, and it's something that you wanted. This project was well-vetted. It didn't come from me. It came from the neighbors, and that's something that's very important, and I believe that they're going to see this as a victory. So thank you to all of you who came out, who supported this project, and this is a victory for the Southeast Ward, particularly the Bellevue and East Island communities. Thank you.
Thank you. And I was going to say that I'm interpreting this motion to be actually a motion to approve the ordinance, the project budget.
Yeah, great.
Councilmember Clark? I will not be voting for it, but I will make my comments at the general meeting.
Okay, very good. All right, Councilmember Burke?
Yes, I would like to say that when you look at this, I will compliment the city manager for making this fair across the board. I think this is what we're about, and when our taxpayers see that we're working together in unity, all of them can receive some things from the tax dollar for their good.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes, the North Ward has been without destination location or substantial park area since, particularly it was annexed a lot of residents in 2006. The purchase along with the conservatory, two, three, two years ago, when the Long Creek Golf Course closed, the people in the community saw that as an opportunity, and it was also driven by them that they, the golf course closed, but they didn't want developers to come and build houses on such a beautiful green space. And so the city was able to get that property with the help of the conservatory, conservation. And we acquired close to 200 acres of land. This allotment of money going forward in the lobs will help to further develop the property. All of the citizens were very happy about that, but also included, you will see that there is money for Pocket Parks in Georgetown and Pocket Park in the Bethany Freedman's area, again, which is the north end of town, which was part of annexing, that we never really, we just didn't give them what they wanted, and I think this is a, a thing that we can be proud of, but the citizens feel like they also got a victory in that now they'll have some parks on that end of town, along with the Nelson Malloy Park, because we just, we didn't have any. So thank you all for supporting this.
All those favor the motion, please. Going to keep voting yes. Anyone opposed? No. Motion passes seven to one. Councilmember Clark voting against a negative. All right, I'm going to go now to the item number four, which is the trial balance budget.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem Burke, and members of the council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Today, I will present to you the trial balance budget. This begins fiscal year July 1st of 2019 through June 30th of 2020. First, we'll begin with looking at the property tax base growth. As you can see, our tax base has grown over the last several fiscal years, on average, approximately 2%. There's an anomaly there between 17 and 18, and that's just the impact from the revow, but on average is a 2% growth. And so for fiscal year 2020, we are also projecting a 2% growth for the property tax base. The, the base includes real property, personal property, registered motor vehicles, and public service companies.
Can I just not be right there? Can I ask a question? What's a public service company? What's the definition?
They are airlines, bus, motor freight, pipeline, a number of just those.
Why do we break those out differently?
It's just something we calculate in terms of our base growth, and it's just a small percent, and it usually doesn't change.
Okay.
Mainly, our, our growth is real in, in personal property.
Right.
For local option sales tax, we also have been experiencing growth over the last several years. For FY '20, we're projecting approximately 3.3% growth. We have 3% growth in our point-of-sale sales tax, which is Articles 39 and 42, and we're experiencing about a 4% growth in the per capita sales tax growth. So just as a summary, our major revenue drivers, as I mentioned before, are property taxes. That should yield approximately $3.7 million growth for our 2% estimated growth over our year-end. For sales tax with the, on average, 3.3% growth, that will yield $1.5 million increase. And then utility sales tax will generate approximately a million dollar increase. And so when we look at our overall proposed general fund budget, we have $211.7 million is our budget. For this current year, FY '19, our budget was $205.4 million. And so budget to budget, our increase is 3%, and that's revenues and expenditures. Okay, so what's included in the $211.7 million budget? A major increase is from our Springstead Market Pay Study. We'll have a full implementation beginning July 1st. The Market Pay Study goes into effect this month, and we'll experience a full-year impact of $4.3 million in our FY '20 budget. It also includes an increase of our minimum wage from $12.50 to $12.75, and those are mainly custodial positions and a few park attendant positions that will be increased. Another major increase to our budget is increased costs to our employee benefits. These are mainly our retirement benefits. The North Carolina Local Government Retirement System for general employees will go approximately half a million, and the remainder of the retirement benefits are for police. So that's our LEO, Whispers, and some police retirement separation. That total is $1.7 million increase. In addition, we have included a 2% public safety supplemental pay that will go into effect January 1st of 2020. That is an increase of $800,000. And then just some minor facility increases, as we mentioned before. Union Station will have a full-year operating increase of $42,000. Parkland Pool will be reopened this year, and so adding that back to the budget is $32,000 for operating and staffing costs. Winston Lake Golf Course, there's an increase of $203,000. That is for six seasonal staff and as well as to increase greens maintenance. And then at Reynolds Park Golf Course, there's a new management contract with T-Square Golf for $84,000. So total increases for facilities is $360,000. So some key areas that we had to make to balance the budget are these three areas. We had to eliminate the average 2% merit to employees. That cost was $2.7 million that you originally saw in our early budget forecast. We also will need to eliminate approximately 10 positions. These would be 10 positions on average salary, about $50,000. We will not include frontline, public safety, no engineers, and no positions that will impact services. our service to citizens or service levels. And we need 750,000 dollars. And we're also proposing to increase the yard cart fee from $60 to $65. And over time, our cost recovery rate has been declining for the yard cart service. We were approximately at 80% and it's been declining each year. We have a cost recovery of about 60% at this time, which the gap will continue to grow based on increased costs for the services, including increases to salaries for the market pay, capital, equipment replacement. So, the $5 increase would generate 136,000. So, the trial balance budget was balanced without a tax increase for operating costs. You'll see in our chart, there is a 4 cent increase and that increase is totally for our 122 million dollar bonds, and that's 4 cents. So, our current rate is 59.74 cents and the proposed new rate will be 63.74 for FY '20. And so, what this means for the average taxpayer for their home value, if you own a home that's valued at 150,000, your tax bill would increase approximately $60. And that's about $5 on average a month.
150 is the median.
It's the median, yeah, home value in this area. And that is it. And so, these are a list of our dates to review the budget. First, we will, on May 20th, review the SOAR grantee agencies at the Public Safety Committee and get some feedback there. The formal presentation of the manager's proposed budget to mayor and city council will be on Thursday, May 23rd at 4 o'clock. And this will be an actual presentation where we will review the budget, review the budget document and the capital plan document. On Thursday, May 30th at 5 o'clock, we will review the community agency's highlights. And then that same evening, we'll have a public hearing, which is mainly the community agencies that will come and speak at the public hearing about the budget. On Thursday, June the 6th at 4 o'clock, there will be a finance committee budget workshop to consider the property tax rate and the recommended budget. And then on Monday, June the 17th at 7, at your normal city council meeting, we'll have a second public hearing and budget adoption.
I wanted to make a comment. Some years ago, when we would put down the value of properties, I thought we would use examples so taxpayers could better understand. But I need to say something about this afternoon is that even though these home values we see, looking at the $50,000 houses and what the current bill and then what the new bill will be, what taxpayers need to keep in mind, even though they have lowered our taxes so much on the east side of town, you do not sell your houses for what you see from the tax office. You make sure that you look at Zillow and others and get it at the market price that it is. I say this because many of your investors went to Castle Heights and Going Far and also in the part of the east area, and they got a lot of night, in the northeast, they got a lot of nice homes. Areas where I live, they bought homes for 30,000, less than 25,000. It's because people became frightened and some did not have jobs, so they were in foreclosure and they wanted to sell. And I'm asking all of you who are listening, if you live east, and I'm sure some west get these notices from people trying to buy our houses, do not get excited. You don't want to sell your house unless they give you the fair market price.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Tony. On the PowerPoint slide that shows the breakdown of what's included in the 211.7 million dollar budget, the one where it has the study, right? On the Springstead study, I noticed you said, and going forward, I hope we'll have this within these slides when we're explaining this to not just the council, but to the citizens, that we did the study. Okay? I always believe we need to always come back and remind each other of what is it that we said we were going to do in the years following. A lot of people would say, you mean you're not at $15 yet? When they've heard us trying to get there for years and the study was going to enable us to do that. So, when I see includes benefits and increase in minimum wage from 12.50 to 12.75, I think we need to help people understand again where we're going with this because not to see it, and I also need to see the year that this study was done, Mr. Garrity, as to again, how are we ascending to this $15 in our wage, which is, we all know, is $15 is not even a livable wage, period. You need more like 20. Also, on the city attorney, the financial folks, on the preemptives from the state level that we are being forced to deal with, whether it's the separations, the fire stations, the new tax, sales tax, all of these other things that are coming in, I think you need something, another piece of information that shows that so citizens will again see that the state is continuing to pull funds, which, you know, makes us have to do a knee jerk to do what we do. Other thing is the one in facilities, the one, but then public safety supplemental, that goes back to those three together in the state. But the facilities, Winston Lake Golf Course, 203,000 dollars. Was that because this year we got to add the staff back or over the year and a half, those folks were missing or are we bringing on new people ahead of the other numbers that we've had the years? And in this case, with these listings here, I would like to see the before, on an average of what we were spending, how many staff were there at all of these listed facilities that we have. And maybe council would like to see it for the majority of them because if, again, we know in '14 we did some things because of the bonds, but we also need to be cognizant of the fact that people need to understand how this is going to be hitting budgets every year as we move forward to improve these parks, add more amenities. There's got to be people that's going to be cleaning, checking, operating and all of that.
Couple of questions, one around the sales tax revenue. Even though we're, we've increased over the time here from actual 2016 to projected 2020, the rate of increase seems to be slowing. So, 2.2 to 2.0 to 2.0 to 1.3. Now, is the 1.3 number kind of a sandbag? We just, we hoping we're going to see a higher number of that or are we actually facing a decrease in the rate of growth there? Do you have any ideas around that?
The rate is increasing and doing pretty well. Right? It's just kind of, yeah, yeah.
So, the actual, but it, I don't know.
There's a rate over time. It seems to be a little stagnant.
Right. But we're not sensing a trend there that.
We're not seeing a downward trend.
Okay. And then the next question is somewhat similar to that with property tax, tax base. It just, it seems irrational that we can have all these cranes and all these trucks and all these white Chevy pickup trucks running around town and not see a larger rate increase than we've seen. Is that because things haven't, I know some has not come online yet, but are we, are we going to see a bump? Again, I get this feeling that there's a little bit of sandbagging going on. It always occurs from, it seems to occur from the county, but how conservative are our numbers of increases?
Yeah, well, this number is actually not conservative compared to what the tax office has given us. Their second number was about 1.4% increase and so we are not using that estimate. They'll give us another number May 1st. And so, we decided to budget at a 2% because we definitely have been seeing that minimum as a trend for the growth. So, we feel pretty confident in a 2.1% growth based on our current year projected into year actual.
Because we do have, we'll have three hotels, two major apartment complexes coming on.
Yeah.
Seems like that should give us a healthy little boost.
But not immediately, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, hopefully, it may not even be next fiscal year, but after that, we will see the benefit in the property base grow.
Our leasing numbers are down 7%. So, just mean that we're putting off capital leases on vehicles primarily?
So, typically, we budget based on the debt capacity. And so, as debt drops off, typically we replace up to what our debt capacity. What we decided not to do is to replace up to that level this year. So, we benefited from some of the debt dropping off.
My concern there is that we don't, I'm sure that you guys worked with a formula to figure out, you know, at this point, it costs more to maintain a vehicle than to.
Yes, so we have been, yes.
Or lease a new one.
Working with fleet services on that and just looking at absolute, when we need to switch out a vehicle, when does the cost of maintenance exceed the value of the equipment?
And then just one quick last one, the cost of yard carts going from 60 to 65, how do we compare to other cities?
So, even with the 5%, we are below what most of our benchmark cities.
That's what I remembered, but I just wanted to make sure because I'll get the phone calls.
Yeah, yeah. So, Durham and Apex is about $90. Some others roll it into other fees, but we are still lower compared to other cities.
Thank you.
First off, this is just an overview. We will be getting a very detailed budget in, what was the date, end of, towards the May?
May 23rd.
So, I know there's lots of questions. I have a lot of questions, but they will be coming due. Couple of questions, comments, and Mr. Garrity, you can answer this today or tomorrow. How are we coming, if you go to the chart where we have the budget, we actually show it fiscal year 19 adopted and fiscal year 20 proposed. How are we coming on the current year? We're down to two and a half months to go.
Councilmember Clark, we've done some updates. We're, we've narrowed that, you know, at one point, our projection was we could, we could exceed our revenue by up to 2 million. It's less than a million now and I'm pretty confident based on some things we're looking at. Healthcare costs are coming in lower than we had anticipated, so I'm pretty sure we'll end, end the year in the black.
Okay. Next question, I'm not sure who to address this to, but when does commercial property go on the books? And I'll give an example. There are a number of apartment complexes being built, as Mr. MacIntosh alluded to. Do they go on the books after it's finished or as it's built? Or both?
I think it's both. I believe there's a small construction value, but majority.
Because I know in houses, if they're for sale, they don't go on the books till they're sold, because that was the change in the state a long time ago. But construction is as we go. Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
And the last one, I just mentioned, we are having a reevaluation of the residential property, but that will not be known until 2020, probably February of 2020, a little bit, not quite a year from now, and that will not affect until the 21 fiscal year budget. So, and who knows what that will be, but just, there's always a lag of that. Thank you.
So, the balance, the balancing adjustments, have you identified the vacant positions to be eliminated?
No, we're still in the process of identifying. We still are having vacant positions open up and what we're going to do is meet with the assistant city managers and just kind of evaluate them one by one to make sure they don't have an impact on service levels.
So, you will provide that list?
We'll provide a list to council.
And do you have any information on what our competitive cities are doing regarding their respective salary increases? One of the things that we've been dealing with for the past several years is the whole we let ourselves fall into a decade ago and the non-competitive position that that put us in. The Springstead study was a substantial, and the fact that we are meeting what we, in the budget, what we anticipated we would need to implement the recommendations at the time is not per se going to keep us competitive going forward. So, do you have any preliminary indication about what our competitive cities are doing?
Not at this time, just because they're still in the process of thinking about it, but I can definitely look into that.
Please.
And yes, get back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Manager, Ms. Toomey. Well, Ms. Clark will look forward to the budget hearings as they get started on May the 23rd there.
Yeah, don't plan any vacations in May.
So, without any objection, take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.